This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. The time is 6:01 PM on Thursday, September 24th, 2020. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council of Vator. Roll call.
Don Rogers.
Here.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Samantha Love Lady.
Samantha is not able to join us tonight. She contacted us.
The Mayor's shot.
Here.
All right. Pledge of allegiance. Mr. Daley, will you do honors?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with ever needed, justice for all.
All right. Mayor's report. Waste water treatment plant upgrade. So last week, we had a conference call with Civil West. And they went over the list of upcoming upcoming item. So I wanted to share those with you. At some point here in the near future, there will be a Civil West will come to the council meeting for our presentation. So but the the gist of it is, the hope is that we'll start advertising for advertising the bids for contractors before Thanksgiving. And that those advertisements will continue into January when the bids will do. And then council will begin the contractor selection process at that time. As soon as council selects a contractor, the contractor could start work immediately, and which could be as early as late February. Obviously, with the weather, what they'll be able to do is limited, but they could start staging equipment at that time. And maybe a few other plumbing related items. See. There's going to be training involved, so our city employees will need to be involved in some of the construction process. And then, of course, towards the end, when it's built, so that they can understand the operation of the new plant. See what else I have having my notes here. Okay. Generally, the proposed the proposed approach for the construction process. They will be demoing the old buildings. There'll be a temporary lab building, probably a trailer brought in. That way, we can continue the operation of our old plant as the construction happens. They'll be installing the headworks and the chlorine contact chamber. And this is all right around early spring. And then after spring and going into summer, they'll probably they'll start taking down one of the two smaller lagoons. And then they'll remove those bio solids from that smaller lagoon, deepen it by a few feet, put in a new liner and new piping. Once that's done, we'll they'll have a temporary bypass. They'll be able to switch over to use that new lagoon. While they do the same thing to the to the second lagoon, removing the bio solids, deepening it, etc. Once, as that stuff is completing, they'll be finishing the buildings. They'll remove the third lagoon completely, and there'll be other minor site improvements like grading fences and the road. And the expectation is that that should be finished up, be finishing up by the fall. So that is the expectation and what's going to happen. Pretty excited. Big things are approaching.
Be one steamy summer next year.
Hopefully not a steamy summer next year.
Oh, good.
Any questions on that? Like I said, there'll be more information to come on that, officially from Civil West. Oh, one other thing. They will be cataloging everything as they go, and they're going to be creating a weekly report with images. And it'll be in a PDF file, and we'll put it on the website. And so everyone can check it out every week and see where they are in the process.
They're gonna have a sale of all the stuff they find in the bottom of the lagoon.
That's it. You want to buy something? I'm afraid they'll find the bottom of the lagoon.
Okay, I can't. Excuse me, but I didn't hear any of that. It's just garbled.
Oh, Mike was just making a joke about wanting to purchase some of the things they might find in the bottom of the lagoon.
No, sell, not purchase. I don't want to purchase.
Oh, you don't want to?
Sell it.
Okay. It was it was just a joke.
It was a joke.
The microphone.
It doesn't work. No, wait, that one's off. That's okay.
All right. Continuing on with the mayor's report. Planning committee update. They're moving on to updates to the fee schedule. They do have some information that City Hall has been putting together for them regarding how much certain things have cost the city up to this point, and how much we recouped in fees. And obviously, we're losing some money on some of those things. For instance, the variance was a great example of that we lost quite a bit of money on that. Our variance fee is too low. Also, our short flat dividing lots up, our fee is a little too low on that. And then, so they're working, they're working through that right now. Gary Cooper has been given their suggestions for the A Street District update. This is regarding the moratorium. And so he's putting together that update right now. Park Board. The Park Board submitted their updated final presentation to the Washington RCO as of last night. And tomorrow is their face-to-face video conference where they present that presentation. And then it'll be many months before we find out if we actually get that grant. But they're they're working on it. Council reports? Any council members have reports? Okay, hearing none. Agenda approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council. Are we doing the agenda approval first? Yeah, okay. Make a motion to approve the agenda for 9/24/2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the City Council agenda for September 24th as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for City Council meeting on September 10th, 2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the City Council meeting minutes for September 10th, 2020. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'm making motion that we approved the vouchers for the end of September for $12,657.86, making the total of September $39,722.86.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. We do not have any special reports at this time that I know of. Does anyone want to make a special report?
I would like to report, you know, the long tense.
It'll be more of a council report?
That's more of a
Or at the end of the meeting, bring
Yeah.
Elected official comments?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do that at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
All right, moving on to city business. So as you can see here, we have the three sewer ordinances on here again. Hopefully, you all got a chance to look at the letter that I accompanied with those that discussed the changes that were included. Everything was included that's been asked for. The, in addition to the ability of the city to loan money out for individuals if they need help with construction. Hopefully, you've all got a chance to look at that. Any discussion on on that on those plans?
We're not passing these tonight, are we?
You can, if you like. They're ready to go.
Oh, I don't, I would like a chance to go through them a little better. When you don't get them any sooner than the public does, it takes a while to go through this stuff. So I would like a little time to be able to go through them a little bit better. I got through some of it, but not all, so.
Okay. Well, like the letter, the only changes are what the City Council asked for. Other than that, they are the same ordinances that we've had for a while now. Any other discussion? Does the council feel like they want to table the vote on this again to the next meeting? There, there, there is not a rush.
There's no rush unless there's a table.
All right. Okay, well, if there's, if there's, if there's no motion, discussion, this is a great time to discuss anything. Except the changes are what you requested. The loan section, though, obviously, is all new. Would you like to discuss that particular portion?
Well, some, but I didn't really get a chance to go through that. One thing stuck out to me. I'm trying to figure out which one, which ordinance I saw it in. There was the thing about the sewer bills and sending them to collections and and things like that. I, I just I know some people don't pay their bills on purpose. There are some in town that do that. But I think some people, when they get behind, it's because they're having a tough time. And I, you know, you see, when you turn them over to collections, then there's all of these fees. And it seems like to me, it's kind of hard on people who are having a tough time already to dump all of this other stuff, all of the fees and everything on top of them. And so I would like to see before that happens, that maybe the city can't work out some kind of a payment plan, you know, when they start, they pay their sewer bill, and then whatever they're behind on can maybe divided up over a period of time until they get it paid to give them an opportunity to do that before it's sent to collections.
Now, some of this sounds like it might be a procedure that we already, that we already follow. Maybe Diane can speak to that as far as how we currently handle that situation. Diane, would you like to say that microphone works, by the way?
Currently, we do that, Donna. When someone is late, they get a notice that their payment is late. There's a $25 charge at that point. And we encourage them, you know, we hope they would contact us and say, we're having this trouble. In the past, I know when I did this job, we would set up a payment plan. They would sign kind of a quotha promissory note with the mayor, saying that they would pay this amount. It would be a time when they would pay it off, and we would agree on the payment amount. Also in that, if they did not follow the payment plan, it would go to collection. The thing that we would do is we would charge them the $25 collection fee, but hold off on sending it as long as they made their payments. And I know that right now, because of COVID, we are not charging late fees or sending accounts to collections that are late because of COVID. So anything that's late from March forward, we are still holding on to.
Okay, it's just that I don't see it in an ordinance. Is it, is it a policy, a city policy? Do we have that in a policy form, or?
It's not in a written policy form. It's kind of as the way we usually do business. And that, you know, that's acceptable. We can put it in a policy if we feel like we need to do that. But I don't want to encourage people to think, hey, I don't have to pay my bill. Look what they have in place for me.
Well, I still think for well, I don't know, it just seems for business purposes or or whatever, because if it isn't in a written form, then it's just up to one person to decide. Like I say, if the person is just having a hard time, fine.
Right. And when it goes to collection, the collection company sends a notice, and that says that within 30 days, they're going to take action. That gives the person another month to be able to say, hey, it went to collection. I want to do something about that. So we can't, you know, go to everybody that's late and say, how's it going? We expect them to contact us, but we can't put that in written form.
I just think it should be in a policy form. Just for legal purposes. And so nobody thinks they're being treated unfairly. Not that anybody would know anyway, I suppose, but still.
Right, right.
Okay, well, we could make sure that those are documented in a, in a, in a policy. That doesn't have to be in the ordinance, though.
No, that, no, that's fine. Yeah, just so we have some kind of documentation and a form, it should be in a policy form, you know, that's
Okay, I made note of that.
Okay. That's all I have for right now for what I got through anyway.
Did anyone have issue with some of the details on the loan options? So if you, I, the high points I put in, I put in my letter to you. The loan would be limited to $5,000 for the construction side of things, plus the city connection fees, if there are any. And that would obviously, that would only be for new new applicants, excuse me, that were formerly on septic. Does that number seem appropriate?
Honestly, I don't know. Now, I have some questions about that one. When you're, I'm not sure how much all of this costs anyway. Does the city, if like, like if I was going to hook up to the sewer, I would have to go all the way down to E Street. So are you saying that I would have to pay for the construction of that sewer line to come up to my house, plus the side sewer?
No, because you're not within. What was that number, 200 feet or 250?
Right, so the new ordinance is going to be set at, I believe it was 200 feet. So if you're, obviously, if you're further, if you're further away from that than that, then you wouldn't need to be required to do it at all. You could, you could instead pay your, your septic fixed.
Okay, so what you're saying then, if I had to hook up to the sewer and I was within the 200 feet, I would not have to pay to put the sewer line into my property, plus the side sewer? Is that what you're saying? I would not have to pay for that?
You would, you would have to pay for your side sewer.
No, I know that, but not for the installation of the actual sewer line that comes up to my property.
That is the side sewer.
No. What she's talking about is right now, it's down at E Street. And so bring it up 10th Street. Would she have to pay to bring it up to 10th Street?
She would have to go to where it is. The sewer line would not move. She would go to it.
If she was within 200 feet.
But that's what I'm asking. If I was within the 200 feet, would I be responsible for paying the city to install that sewer line up to my property? I know I will have to pay for the side sewer, but
It doesn't install it to your property. The contractor does. See.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm not, I'm, never mind. Let's just, never mind.
Maybe for clarification, the city sewer line would not move. Your side sewer would go to it and connect to it.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay. Okay, hang on a minute, and I'll see if I can rephrase this and get it in some. If I was forced to have to hook up to the sewer, and I was within the 200 feet, the city is going to have to put in a sewer line from E Street up to my driveway, I would assume. And what I'm asking is, would I have to pay the cost of that?
No, you would, you would, your side sewer would, if it would need to be, it would actually cross other people's properties. I think we have several people that already do that, where, you know, someone's side sewer goes behind someone else's house.
So I don't think my side sewer would be, because if you brought the sewer line up E Street to my house, I would be the first one to hook up. Everybody else, I don't know about them. I'm just trying to find out if I would have to pay for the sewer line to come to my property from E Street.
No, I don't, I can't think of any, any reason why a person would have to pay to move the public sewer or to extend the public sewer.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. So I would just have to pay for the side sewer and the hookup then, right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so I don't know what a side sewer costs. I have no idea. But hooking up to the sewer, I think, as it stands now, is what, $4,000?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if 5,000, I don't know if that would be enough, but I don't know what the city can handle either, and I don't know how. Would you have to make an actual loan? Or is there just like a payment plan? I'm not sure how all of that works, really.
Dan, do you want, do you want to talk about how it would work?
Oh, sure. So it would actually be a loan from the city to the citizen. And I'm sorry, I don't know if I clarified myself earlier, but the side sewer goes to where the city sewer already is. The city sewer does not move. It would not come up E Street. It would stay where it was. You would connect to it, and that's your responsibility. But the
Wait, wait. Okay, hold it, because that's not going to work. I can't run the side sewer. You've been to my house, and you know where E Street is. Do you know how long that is down to E Street from my house? That's what you're putting in the sewer.
But it's over 200 feet, so you don't have to worry about it.
Okay, there's, there's some big confusion here with this, because I thought the city would have to bring the sewer line to my property, and then I would have to hook up. And that's, because I'm, geez, that's, that's crazy. I, running a side sewer from my house, this, yeah, no, that's not right.
Which is why the ordinance is written in such a way that you are far enough away from our public sewer right now. You would not be required to do it if your septic failed.
Right, but I'm trying to find this out for other people also, if
They would probably be closer, and then they wouldn't, the cost wouldn't be as absorbent.
Well, Mike wouldn't be close. If Mike had to hook up, he would have to go to E Street, too.
Yes, but I, the only reason I'd have to go to E Street, or actually, I would, we would never have to go to E Street, because that's further than, it's further than 200 feet for us.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, Mike, as an example. I mean, you know, just not that you, but yeah, if you, just say you had to.
Okay, so if if the city puts in, using 10th Street as an example, if the city was to put a sewer going down 10th Street from Alpine Court to E Street, and then at that point, if one of our septics failed, then, and our building is within 200 feet of that pipe, then we would have to attach to it.
Right, but we would only have to pay for our side sewer to attach to it. The sewer would be
Yes, you are correct.
Yes, so that's if the city decided to run that through there, then it would open up the option for us to hook up when we have a failure.
Right, yeah.
Or if somebody builds a new house on there, or whatever.
Yeah, I was just trying to get, because, you know, if it wasn't any of us or someone else on sewer, and they were close enough within that 200 feet, and their system failed, I was just trying to find out if it wouldn't be the city's responsibility to run a sewer line to them, say they were at 200 feet at the city's expense, and then they would have to hook into the sewer, city sewer line, at that point. But, and I was just wondering, if the city did that, would they make this person pay also for the installation of the city's sewer line?
No, I don't think so. I think, I think if, for instance, let's say the Public Health Department didn't want to issue any more septic systems, they would probably require the city to extend our public sewer.
Okay, all right.
Convenient for the homeowners, and then the homeowners would have to pay their portion to extend it to their side sewer to the new sewer.
Okay, that's what I was just trying to get clear.
And I hope that Department of Health and Ecology, which has a grant for that, probably won't be cheap.
Okay, that was, that was my last question on that, I think.
Right, that's why, like, the $5,000 as maximum. You know, you're talking about, you know,
Maximum 200 feet.
A maximum of 200 feet. They gotta, they gotta trench it, and they gotta lay a pipe in it, and then glue it on both ends. That, that really, we could probably get a, an estimate to no, but the 5,000 should be more than enough to cover it. And if it's not, then the property owner would just have to, pay, pay that little bit more themselves, whatever goes up and beyond the 5,000.
Well, I think it would be, I don't know, but considering if you had to get an engineer, and then you have to get a contractor just to dig the side sewer, I'm sure that would eat up $5,000 quickly. And then having to run it 200 feet more down to the sewer line, I don't think that's, that would be more than $5,000, I'm sure.
Well, Joe Hall on C Street just had to do that, right? Or we could use that as an example. We could get ahold of them and find out what it, what it costs.
Sure.
And then we would know. It's the same situation where it was an old alley, on the C Street alley, that they had to run a, a new connection to the sewer, a manhole. And it was 150, 150 feet, I think, is what I measured on the maps.
Yeah.
So we'll see if we can get ahold of that, and then, and then we'll, we'll have an estimate of
Okay. All right. Okay, that's, that's all I needed to know for that part, anyway. Think so. I'm done.
Any other discussion on the sewer ordinances? Hearing none, then we'll move on to City Council. Yes, uh, hearing none, then we'll move on to, um, City Council Item Business Number Four. Uh, Council to Consider Resolution 18 dash 2020 CARES Act Relief Grant. Actually, oh, we need to do it the other way around, don't we? Don't we need to approve the contract first? Let's do that real quick. I, I am, I am sorry to have to do this. We need to skip to City Business Item Number Five first. If we're gonna do this in proper order, Council to Consider Resolution 19 dash 2020 Department of Commerce CARES Act Funds Contract. So if you remember, um, the cities in Washington got, um, money CARES Act funds. Um, first, uh, uh, amount of $25,000 and then an additional 5,000 just recently for a total, for city, for Tervater up to $30,000. To utilize this money, um, there is a contract with the Department of Commerce. And a lot of other cities just had their mayor, um, sign the contract based on their emergency order. But, um, I decided that we should have a resolution, um, just to be safe and have Council approve the mayor, um, to be able to sign this, um, contract. And it's kind of a take it or leave it thing. If we want the money, we have to.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 19 dash 2020, the Department of Commerce CARES Act Funds Contract.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve Resolution 19, 2020, um, Department of Commerce CARES Act Funds Contract. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Back to discussion. Um, i- is there any other discussion on this? Hopefully, I know it did, some of that information came late. But, um, it's pretty, pretty standard. It's just an acceptance of grants. It, it is all it is. Is there any other discussion?
No, I think it's, it's great.
Very, very good discussion.
I forgot all about that.
Sounds like, sounds like everyone likes the idea of free, free money.
Whenever we can.
Reminding, so, okay. Um, all in favor of approving Resolution 19, 2020, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now that we approved being able to accept the money, let's talk about using some of the money. Uh, Council to Consider Resolution 18 dash 2020 CARES Act Relief Grant. So, the system items that cities can use this grant money for is, is fairly limited. And in a nutshell, it needs to be limited to things that were not in our budget before COVID happened. And the things need to be related to COVID somehow. So for instance, um, enabling your workers to telecomm or telecommute from home. Um, you know, those types of, uh, the technology required for that if you didn't have laptops or things like that. Which is how we're going to justify needing a laptop for the city, um, to enable us to have remote meetings. That was one of the things. Um, some of the things are overtime for your employees. If you had a employee that was out for an extended amount of time because of COVID or they were quarantined and you needed to pay for overtime, um, you could do that. Obviously, we haven't needed any of that. In fact, the city of Vator hasn't had hardly any costs at all. Um, except for ones that we needed to do for this teleconference, for instance. And we also expended a little bit of money, a couple hundred dollars, to upgrade the size of our, um, utility drop off box in the, in the door because more people were dropping off bills, so we needed more space. So, the other thing that we can do with this money, we can, we can give it to businesses as grant for economic relief. And a way that some cities have been doing that is instead of giving grants directly to businesses, they give the money to residences, the, the citizens of the town, and the citizens choose who to give the money to with their business in effect. So you, you give people a, a voucher for a certain amount of money and then they go to the business of their choice, spend that amount of money, and then the business returns the voucher to the city and the business gets their grant, which is in the amount of whatever voucher was spent then. So the city of Centralia has done this. Um, and they can, uh, more, um, public sizes is Tenino. And some of you may realize that Tenino has done this. But, uh, we got ahold of Centralia's documents and, um, changed them to our needs and Vader would like to do the same thing. I'd like to actually give Diane a lot of credit for this. This was her idea to make this happen, so. Thank you, Diane. Yeah. Um, so the, in a nutshell, um, the way this would work, um, some cities have had income limits, so you had to be an X amount of, within the poverty level to, to get the money. So you would have to come into City Hall, fill out an application, tell the city all of your financial information and prove that you were, you were at some level of low income. People don't like that. Um, uh, and I don't, uh, I don't, I don't fault them for not liking that. There is no requirement that the city do that. We don't have to say it's a certain requirement. Um, and so we felt that, given the amount of money that, that we have, say $20,000 we could, we could use for this, and the number of households in town, we could open it up to everybody in town. Come in, you apply, you prove that, you prove your residency, you get your vouchers and you go about your business. So that's the idea.
Could those vouchers be used also for sewer mills?
No, they have to go to businesses, not, not the government. And they would go, and the way this is written, they would go to businesses that are, that have business licenses within the city of Vader. So you could, and, and the business would have to, um, apply as well. So we'd have to get ahold of all the businesses, let them know that this is available. They would apply and they'd get on a list and then the people that have the vouchers would know where they can go and use this money. It doesn't need to be strictly storefronts. Um, for instance, we were talking with, um, a contractor here in town and that contractor was interested in doing this. Maybe putting together a small, uh, safety inspection of home package where a, where a resident could get ahold of them and use their voucher to get a safety inspection. And then, of course, then they would, the business would, would, uh, give it to the city and they could get their, get their grant, their reimbursement. Cool. So that's the idea. What do you think?
I think it's great.
The, there is a deadline. Um, the end of November, the CARES Act money has, the, we have to, uh, we have to, anything, anything that is spent needs to be spent by the end of November. And then, um, the, the, any reimbursements for businesses would need to come in by the middle of December. Was it the 12th, if I remember correctly?
Um, I think we put the 10th.
The 10th.
We have to submit them up to the city.
We have to, okay, so the city has to submit our reimbursements by December 15th. So the businesses would need to ask for their reimbursements by December 10th to the city. And any, any people that have vouchers would need to spend them by the end of November. So that's how it's written. Hopefully you got a chance to see that in your documents.
You can spend it with any business.
Any business that's registered with the, with the city.
Within the city.
Within the city limits. Yep, if you wanted to get ahold of, if you wanted to go to J and G's and buy some chips, you could do that. If you wanted to get ahold of Apple Electric and have a, have a light switch fixed, you could do that. This is all assuming that those businesses apply with the city bill.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Say a person comes in, just say J and G's with the voucher for 25 bucks. They buy a bag of chips.
Okay.
So, the change is.
No change. There's no, there's no cash value. If, if someone came in, comes in with the $25 voucher and they buy something for $5, they don't get $20 in change.
Just wanted to put that out there.
So they should overspend, not underspend. They want to get the full, the full value.
How many businesses are registered in Vader?
Oh, I don't have that total number. We've been in contact with four different ones and I know that there are more than that.
Yeah, uh, last week, um, Diane was flipping through the business licenses, um, to, to get an idea of the number. Um, it was in the dozens, wasn't, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
It was in, in the dozens.
The dozens, the dozens that people actually know about or the dozens that people have business licenses here, but their, uh, their business is in another town.
It would only be businesses located in the city.
So it would be businesses located in the, in the city, so.
And we would advertise the businesses that were registered for everybody when we give them the script.
Okay. Did, did you hear that? Did you hear it like an okay over there?
Uh, no, no, not all of it, but, um, still, uh, I don't know of any businesses here in town other than Jason's, so it looks like he's gonna make, what, $20,000?
No, it, it, well, people can choose to go where they want, obviously.
Well, I know, but where, that's what I'm trying to find out. Where are they going to go? What businesses in this community that people, uh, everybody knows about? As I don't know who they are. I don't do business here. Uh, I mean, Judy's Place, but I don't know that Apple Electric would, I don't know what they would do. That's the only other one I know of. And, um, Jason's Store and Restaurant.
Right, so what, what the city will do is we'll, we'll get ahold of the businesses and we'll see if they want to participate. These are the folks that are registered with the city, um, with valid business licenses. And that they can put together, you know, say they don't have a storefront, say they are a contractor. They can put together something like a safety inspection or, or, you know, maybe some type of, uh, weatherization, or if the general contractor, maybe they can do like weatherization where they come in and they put, they put, um, weather stripping around doors and windows for somebody. I mean, there, there's, you know, every business will be, it'll be up to them. And what we'll do, what we'll do is we'll, we'll create a list of businesses that have registered for this program. And then when people pick up their vouchers, they will get a list of businesses that are registered to this program. And at that time, then the folks will be educated that there are other options besides just, um, storefronts that are in town.
Well, um, oh, okay, I, uh, I don't know, uh, well, how much is the dollar amount gonna be then? Because if there's $20,000, what's happening to the other 10,000?
So, so we decided, so like, so we, we're gonna expend some money on the, the laptop. We've already expended some money on some, um, safety and cleaning supplies for City Hall. Um, of course, the public utility box. So it was decided that we would use, obviously, some money for that. Keep other money in reserve in case, um, some other expenses did come up over the next couple of months and then use 20,000 for this program.
Okay, so you have in mind then, um, using 10,000.
We probably won't use anything beyond whatever we talked about. But like I said, it's a safety measure. We decided to keep some money in reserve. You never know what might happen. We didn't want to just put every dollar available into this, um, business relief program.
Okay, and so at, at the end of the time, if the money isn't used, then it goes back to the, the state, is that what?
Right, it disappears, yeah.
Okay, so at this point, then, um, this is all just kind of a sample thing, uh, from Centralia, right?
This is ready to go. If, 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 if City Council approves this tonight, we're off and running and we're gonna make this thing happen in the next week and a half to two weeks.
Okay, but, um, so how, so, so you've decided that the dollar amount for these vouchers and only one person can have one, one time, are for $25. And so is it available to, uh, because you said you could change this and make it available, you, I, I, okay, I got the impression that this is just a sample of Centralia's and we could make it available to not only low income people, but everybody in the community if they wanted one. So which is it? What, what are you, uh, I haven't read it all in detail, but. So what's it gonna be?
Well, other large cities have made it, have made it, made restrictions on who can apply. Obviously, they made it available to everyone in Centralia.
Okay.
So there'd be very little to go around to maybe some other folks that need it. Um, Vader is a different situation. If we give, say, $200 per household, um, there's a couple hundred households in town. We can, assuming everyone came in, we could do half, half of the city, give half of the city $200, to do what as they please. So that's why we didn't.
Have to spend it here in town. Um, okay, so what is this? I'm not getting this part here, where you have the little graph thing here. It says persons in household one. Script amount, is it $10? That's it for one person per highest household? Is that what?
Diane, would you like to talk about any draft?
Yeah. Um, the script would be $25 denominations. For a household of one, they would get $100. For a household of two, they would get $150. And if they have three or more people in their household, they'd get $200.
Okay.
If everybody in town got it, we would be spending $40,000. Um, but we don't expect that everybody's gonna apply. Um, and so when we hit our $20,000 mark, you know, we have to stop. However, if we don't spend it, uh, we have talked about possibly at the beginning of November issuing it again to try to spend more of the money. And the thing I like about this is that it's a twofold approach. It's not only helping our businesses, but it's also helping our citizens. We're giving them free money to buy groceries, go out to eat. Um, there are other businesses in town that they can profit from. Um, and so we know that most of the citizens and the businesses have been hit. We've gotten this government money from, it's not just the state, it came from Washington DC. So we want to spend it while we have it. If we don't, we have to give it back.
Right, but I'm trying to figure out what other businesses in town could these people spend this money at?
Okay, I will, I will have a list when they're all registered. We'll have a list of who they are.
Okay, I see the only other ones outside of the food, which is Jason's place, is, uh, barbers, cosmetologists, car repair, accountants, architects, doctors, engineers, lawyers, surveyors, technology service, do, do we have all these people in town? I mean.
No, we don't. We wanted to have a broad approach, so we put everybody, every possible thing in there. Um, so that it would be covered. We have to be able to turn this back to the government and say, here's our program. Here's how we wrote it. Here are the restrictions and it has to match what they say we can use. Um, so it's very, has a lot of leeways in it. It's very specific about those kinds of things. Um, so we just want to make this work for our city. Again, we're not saying that you have to make a certain income. We're saying everybody who lives here, this is available to you.
And I think we're justified in, 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 in that as well. Not that there is a limitation that we couldn't do that. Um, but we have the low income designation from Department of Housing and, and all of that, you know, and which is how we get, um, Community Development Block Grants. So, you know, we have, we have these designations already to help us along in this, but we're not worried about that. That, that, it won't be an issue. They want us.
So let me, I just want to get this straight. Is it just for low income people or is it for everybody in town?
It is for everybody in town.
Okay.
Yeah, other cities have done low income designations. But we are so small, we can, we can reach half of the households in town without an income limit. So it'll be available to anybody. They walk in, they approve, they approve their residency, they get their vouchers. That's it. No income limits.
Okay, well, Jason's gonna do real well.
I hope a lot of people do well, you know, the, the reason, the, the, the point of this, I mean, obviously it'll help the residents as well, right? The folks that get voucher. But in the end, the, the way the CARES Act Relief Grants are written, it's a grant to the businesses. So the more money we can get to, into the hands of the people, the more hand, money will go to the businesses, whether it's, whether it's Jason's businesses or whether it's contractors that are able to get in here and offer some really neat packages that people weren't even thinking about. And, uh, maybe people can learn about some of the other businesses in town, um, that they didn't know about before. So this, this could be good for a lot of reasons.
And I would like to.
I have a question.
Even though we have a limited amount of businesses, those businesses were hit hard. Especially when we were like, you know, the first ring, they were closed completely except people coming to the drive thru. Um, they had to, you know, lay off people. They had to, the owners are having to work now more than their regular employees. And, um, And, um, I talked to Anita, who's related to all those businesses, and asked her what kind of relief they had gotten from the government. And she said nothing. They have applied, but had not qualified. And so you can't give dollars that cost the spring and summer. And so why don't we want to build that business back up? Because we want it to stay in town.
Okay. I'm just saying, I don't know who those businesses are. I, I don't, any.
We're gonna find out. We'll, we'll, we'll do some outreach, and they'll, they'll all have an opportunity to have their name on the same list. We did have a, um, a member of the public, um, online that wanted to speak. Please identify yourself.
Hi, Mayor Shai, it's Scott Gross.
Hi, Scott.
I just had a quick question with regards to those vouchers. When it's, when the voucher is used at the business, is it then considered cash to that business as far as income reporting, business income, or, uh, income tax collection, and the city gaining revenue back off of that as well?
Income tax revenue?
We don't get an income from it.
Sales tax, excuse me, I'm sorry. Sales tax, pardon me.
I have to say.
Right, yeah, there'll be, normal sales tax will apply. Um, it'll be, the, the business will consider it normal income and, and do everything that they would normally need to do with that income.
So then it does generate income for the, the city as well then, for people to use those and spend them?
I, I suppose it does. I didn't think about that.
Okay.
You're, you're correct.
Yeah.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Any other questions? I know this is, there's, this is an interesting program. It's, it's, it's pretty amazing that the city is able to give back to the residences like this and, and the businesses, but this is the way it's written. We're not the only ones to do it, but I probably can, it's probably safe to say that we're the smallest ones to do it. So, pretty, pretty exciting. Probably not.
Why? You make all your stuff here.
Any other questions regarding this? Do we have a motion?
I motion to approve Resolution eighteen dash twenty CARES Act relief grant.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve Resolution eighteen dash twenty twenty, the CARES Act relief grant. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Donna, I didn't hear your vote.
That's because I didn't give one. Aye. I was, I was reading something, sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we captured it. Was you unanimous? Excellent. Thank you, everybody. Um, obviously, um, tell everyone you know, um, that this is coming. Uh, they'll be able to get updates on the website about it. Uh, make sure businesses know as well that they can get in here and get registered and get on the list. People won't believe it, that this is, this, this is happening, but, um, make sure that they know.
Well, can somebody, I don't know in the office or somewhere, put it on Facebook? Uh, that seems to get to the public more. I don't think too many people look on the Vader website, but.
Well, I have the feeling it's gonna be in the papers, um, the paper as well, but, um, feel free to put on the, if you, if you would like, you can put it on the website, or on the, excuse me, on the Facebook.
Mayor, will they list the, uh, the approved businesses on the city website? That might be a good idea.
Absolutely. We'll have all of that on there. Well, Diane has something to add.
Um, our advertising approach is that, yes, we're gonna put it on our website. We'll list the businesses. We'll list, um, everything that you can use, and we'll have the application on site as well. We also are gonna put posters in the businesses, posters in the City Hall, up, up on our reader board, we'll have information. We're gonna put an advertisement in the paper. We hope that she thinks it's exciting, and we'll do an interview about it. Um, we're doing everything we can to get the word out, and mostly, it's gonna be from the people. So we encourage everyone to tell. And then, again, uh, it's my policy that City Hall does not post on Facebook. Um, and that if a citizen wants to put it on there, that's great, but we do not participate in it. So thank you so much, Donna.
Excellent. Pretty cool. Okay, moving on, that's the last item of city business, public comment. Does any members of the public have any comment?
Randy.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking not.
I wanted to bring up something different.
All right, elected official comment.
Yeah. I wanted us to consider getting a, um, log to cut those trees along town on the city property. I think there's, uh, probably twelve poor trees and some maples, and they probably pay it for it. You know, we would get rid of the block in the street and the wires and stuff from those big used trees.
Take a look at that. Are they, are they, are they not, uh, are they, what if we got trimmed?
By the sheep?
By the sheep, along town. That's, I talked to the owner of that property. That, they're on the other side of the fence. They're on the city side of the fence. They're close to the, well, well.
They're, they're our, like, they're, they're city trees.
We need to do something with them one way or another.
Okay, well, I'll make sure to.
Might as well get paid for it.
Okay, let me write that down, and we'll talk a lot about that too, and we'll see what he's, what he's.
Maybe Mike knows, uh, some contract logging guys who might want to grab those trees.
Street tree. Okay.
No, it wouldn't cost us anything.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into that. Any other elected official comments?
Yes, I have a comment. I have a comment about the jail.
Oh, okay.
This is getting beyond, um, the jail's roof was leaking. Uh, it, the porch boards are coming up off of it. Somebody's ripped the, uh, skirting off of the porch again. The pavilion is leaking again. That jail is in trouble, and I don't hear anybody, and I haven't heard anybody for years. Not only from the council, the park board, planning committee. Every time I bring up the jail, it goes into the wild blue somewhere, but that jail is rotting, and there isn't gonna be anything left of it. That is the only historical thing that this community owns. And to lose that because of lack of interest and irresponsibility on this city's part for not maintaining that jail and losing it is beyond reprehensible, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, I don't know if John is allowed on his own to see things that are wrong and take care of it, but that tree that's standing there right by the jail is rubbing all over the top of the roof. Um, that thing needs some repair and maintenance, and it needs it quickly. It's not something that can be put off again. I've been hearing that since two thousand and four, and nothing has been done to that jail except by volunteers in this community. Judy Costello, the Smiths, Reggie and Linda have painted it, I don't know how many times, and, um, this is just, this is sickening to see this happen to this jail, and nobody brings it up. Nobody talks about it. It's all about the parks. Well, you know what? The parks are there, and people can use them. But that jail is going to rot, and then it's gonna fall down, and that's gonna happen pretty soon. Something needs to be done about it.
The handrails that you said are missing, they're in the, they're in the city shop right now. Uh, John removed them, and he's painting them right now. Um, they were drying, uh, today when I was down there. Um, the pavilion roof, uh, Ken Jawsen of the Park Board, um, I believe he got a quote this week on the replate, on the, the fixing of the roof, um, so we should have that from him very soon.
Yeah, it isn't gonna be done. You know, getting quotes is one thing, 'cause they've been doing that for years. But getting a roof on it, and getting a roof on that jail is more important than the pavilion right now. It has a much higher priority in my mind. We can't even open that up for people to see it anymore. It is an attraction for this community, and there are people in town that care about what happens to that.
Right, and I, I, they haven't really been talking about, um, well, they, they do talk about the, the, the physical structure of the jail, but they haven't really put a lot of time into that this year. Unfortunately, they've been talking about other things, so I'll make sure to reiterate that to them, that, um, we need to get some more motion on that. Otherwise, I mean, the City Council can do things without. I mean, I know it's kind of the, the domain of the Park Board, but, um, they are advisory to the council. And, um, if the council wanted to seek, um, some, some, uh, estimates on doing some of that work, um, the council could, numbers could do that as well.
Well, we need to do that. We need to do it soon. The roof on that jail is critical right now, 'cause I know it leaks around the chimney. And, um, now it's leaking. That jail looks horrible. I mean, it is. You can just look at it, and it, it's awful. And, and it's, it's shameful that this city lets it look like that. That we don't do any maintenance on anything in this community, uh, on any city buildings, not only the jail, but everything else.
Well, the budget, uh, uh, as you all saw, the budget process is coming up. We've got the, some of the, uh, the, uh, meetings and workshops for that. Um, this would be a good time to boost up some of our, our budget line items for some of those projects that we wanna do, and, and make those a priority in this, in this new year.
Well, the jail needs to be the top priority, and it needs to be done soon. And, um, I still have a question about John, what he's allowed to do. Is he allowed on his own, uh, or does he make a list of the things that he sees in this community that need to be done? Um, like a priority list or things like that? I also wanted to ask about what ditches get cleaned here in Vader? Like the one over on Tenth between, um, what is it, D and B and all of that, that ditch in there? Why it's never cleaned out? And why we always appear on Tenth Street between F and E Street, all of that, where those trees are, uh, that Randy was talking about. All of that is just left in a mess, and these trees aren't trimmed because they do belong to the city. So I don't know what, if John even knows what he's allowed to do or what's on his agenda. Is there any kind of a, a, a list that he, that he goes by?
Right, so a lot of times, it's, it's things City Hall points out to him, but absolutely, he, um, on his own, fruition, he'll, he'll take on items and get things fixed without us asking as well. And, uh, larger items, he does bring down to City Hall and let us know that, that, uh, they need, um, some attention, and he needs permission to, you know, spend a little bit of money from the street fund or the park fund to, to fix certain items.
Okay, I, I was just wondering what kind of authority you let him have on his own, uh, being he is our, our maintenance man, or whatever his title was that you gave him.
I am absolutely okay with him jumping on anything that, that needs to happen. Uh, he's very capable, and, and I trust his, his judgment on that.
Yeah, well, I do too, completely, but I just, I just don't, I don't quite, you know, I'm not involved in, in the, uh, employees, but I just wondered how much authority you allowed him to have to see something and, and go fix it, or do something about it, or some kind of a itinerary of things that need to be done in the community? Like, these trees here do need to be trimmed up a little bit, 'cause they're hanging awful low over Tenth Street.
Yeah, and I'll remind him of that. I mean, he does do, uh, trimming and stuff. Um, he's done some of that recently on some of the other roads, so I'll remember.
He's aware, he's aware of.
Okay, he's aware of Tenth Street.
He's also aware of, uh, the sewer manhole across the other side of, that north side of E Street, which was getting raised and pitted, and needs some asphalt.
Okay, we have cold patch, so he, so, so he should be able to take care of it.
He's on.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So definitely, if you see issues like that, you know.
That's the safety.
Send an email, yeah, send an email to City Hall, um, and, and then it won't, and copy me on it as well, and then I'll make sure that it gets followed up on, um, like these trees on Tenth. We'll make sure to look into that.
I talked to him about it.
Okay.
And, uh, said I would bring it up.
Okay.
Which I get.
So do we have that other, other young man that you hired? Is he helping John now, or?
Yeah, he has. They, he started last week. Um, I talked to John about him today. It's going well. Um, he's been assisting a little bit with the, uh, lab testing as well down at the sewer plant. So, yes, it's going well.
Oh, good. Well, I, I'm not, just so this is real clear, I, I'm not saying anything bad about John. He walks on water, as far as I'm concerned, but. Anyway, yeah, I think John does an excellent job, and I know there's only one person, and there's an awful lot of work in this city that needs to be done. So I'm really glad that we've hired that young man, and I hope we can see maybe where John is able to do a little bit more, get more done.
Absolutely. Diane had a few comments.
Um, I agree with you about John. Um, there is a process that we follow, and I just wanted to kind of give you a summary of that. Um, this year, I've given John a lot more leeway as far as making decisions about what needs to be done, what needs to fix it. On his own, he had, um, TB'd almost every manhole in the city as far as where the sewer lines run, and so that we could complete that, because we had a lot of misinformation about where the sewer lines actually were. He's worked with contractors that come into town that are building new properties. Um, for example, on C Street, they're digging a whole new line to connect to the sewer. John was there to help them locate that and to help, um, them with what kind of dimensions, water flow, everything like that. Um, he also is surveying all the street signs in town so that we can replace the ones that need to be replaced. He's also, um, he on his own has purchased through the city, and, um, what Mayor was talking about today, uh, he and Jesse are working on is replacing rotting boards around the pavilion, around the park, in Word Park. So he's on top of that. On top of that, right now, he's working with, um, an electrician to get everything in place in McMurphy Park so that we can install the cameras that we want to. Um, we have to get the electricity put back in. Wires have been pulled, all those things. So he is really self-directed, but he and I work together as a team and talk about, you know, how to do it, and then I can try and find the money to do it, um, and he does a really great job. So again, I think the best thing, if you have a concern, is to email City Hall or drop off a note, um, and then we can follow through the process.
Well, I, um, I've seen, when you've done the budget before, that, um, or I've read also, um, that, um, he should be making out his own budget. I mean, he knows what's going on. I mean, he does the maintenance, so he is the person that knows more than anybody does. So is he not just given a budget, uh, I mean, with a certain dollar amount that he's allowed to spend before he has to get permission from the, from the mayor?
Here's a little story. Um, several weeks ago, um, I sat down, well, we were standing, but, uh, with John, and we were going through that reconciliation, um, form that we all get, right, with, with the amount of money left in the budget. And I, I showed him where we were on certain items, like, for instance, truck maintenance. We, so we had seven hundred dollars in the budget for truck maintenance, um, and we hadn't spent any this year. And John said, I didn't know we had seven hundred dollars for truck maintenance. We need some oil changes. And, and the, the tires on the front of the truck are leaking. I had to patch them myself, and I have to check the air and air them up every single day I drive that truck. And I said, well.
You got new tires for it.
He got new tires, so he didn't have to air the things up every day, you know, it's a safety issue. Right, the money's in the budget. It's there, and, and the observation was, you're right, he did not know how much money we had for certain things, um, and that there were problems that he could get them fixed right away. Um, so, um, that has changed. He knows that he has a budget for certain things. Um, you mentioned ditches that needed to be cleaned.
Yeah.
We, we gave him the budget, I gave him the budget, um, for street maintenance right now, and he's getting ahold of, um, some, like a tractor company, or, um, maybe even to rent one himself and get a backhoe in here and get these ditches, um, dug out and leveled, um, right away. So that's all happening right now, and, um, he was very happy to know that there was money, um, for those things that we could get, get working on them.
Okay, so how, how, you know, I've read in this thing where each department, of course, we're very, very small, you know, we're talking like Seattle or someplace, where every department has a department head, so John is his department head. So why not just drag his little body into the office when we sit down and make out this, and have him make a list of the maintenance that he sees, or the repairs in the city, uh, for the next year, and have John do it, and sit down with him and discuss all of this stuff, and let him, um, or, and you guys figure out what his budget should be, and what money we have for the maintenance this coming year?
Absolutely.
So John, so John knows.
Yeah, we're, we're doing it a little differently this year. Um, you know, Diane's taken a lot of training as far as, but, the ways to do budgets and things like that. Just, right, this will be her, her first year heading, heading that process. Um, and right in the documents, it does talk about, um, department heads having certain due dates, when to have their budgets to this, the clerk forever, um, and, um, and so, yeah, we are taking that, um, that training to heart, and, and we are gonna ask him that, so, it's happening.
Okay, good, I'm glad to hear that.
And just in general, um, as mayor, I have given our, um, city employees a little bit more, um, leeway to get things done on their own, um, without having too much oversight. Obviously, um, budget-wise, right, things have to get approved and things like that, but, um, you don't, basically don't wait for someone to, to tell you to fix a problem. If there's a problem, bring it up yourself, and then, and we'll get it, we'll get it going together.
Right, I, I just wanted to, um, I guess what I was trying, part of it is that John has a buzz, budget, and so he knows what needs to be fixed, and up to a certain amount of money, I think, of, more, you know, make it a little more than twenty-five dollars, where he can just feel free to go do what he has to do to get that repaired.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're a lot more, I think, uh, right now, the city is a lot more easygoing on that kind of thing than we have been on the past. Still sticking to the budget, but, uh, you know, making sure we can get tires for the truck when, uh.
Poor John, okay. Okay, that's all I have, I'm done.
Uh, any other elected official comment?
I just wanted to mention, uh, we're having, um, water issues again, well, obviously, with all that water coming out from underneath them, and that pipe is still compressed down by the, the bridge. We've talked about it for years and years and years.
Stormwater line along.
Stormwater line, yeah, I'd really love to see some movement on that, because we're, I've been in the restaurant here recently, and it's just, even during the dry months, it's wet under there, because any little sprinkle, it comes across that road, so.
His property is the type of, it's a question.
It's on.
On the railroad?
It's on the state. The PUD put in that line to go over to the.
German auto?
German auto, and that, ever since then, they compressed that line, Rodney Allison was, was the one that was running the, the excavator, and told me that they pulled out, uh, the culvert there. So, I know that that's where the problem is.
So it's along the five oh six easement, but it would be the city of Vader stormwater.
Yeah.
Line. Tricky thing. Right, and that's not the only stormwater problem in town. The one over A Street and Sixth, by the, by the church, um, it got backed up too. And so we're, we're actually trying to give a, trying to get a quote from the county to see if we can get that fixed, because that's causing, that could, one, back into people's houses, two, it almost floods the CenturyLink building, and then, I don't think anyone wants their internet to shut down.
It's bad enough when it gets wet around here.
Yeah, and so I'm hoping to have, um, something for council, we've worked on it for way too long. Um, but probably at the next meeting, be able to get that fixed, but you're right, that other one, the one down there needs to get fixed too. Maybe, maybe we can somehow get them both fixed.
Yeah, add it on, I mean, if they got, if they're gonna be doing some excavation up there to fix that, or what, or, I mean, the equipment's gonna be.
That one could be a little bit trickier, because of the, the highway and the requirements.
On the side of the.
The state might have.
On the side, yeah, they didn't have to tear up any of the asphalt on the, on the, on the highway. You can tell, you can see what the teeth marks with, you know, it's on the edge, so it's, it's not on the highway.
Okay. How far down do you think it is?
Yeah, uh, probably, I don't know, five, six feet.
Five or six feet? And how much of a length do you think would need to get repaired?
For me, you?
Straight.
I'm just guessing, you know, that they've excavated a pretty wide hole, because they had to put the supports, whatever, so they could get that drill down there to, to bore. So they went down really deep for that, but in, I don't know how far down the, uh, the pipe was that they, it comes, it comes out of the ground, um, over by the bridge, you know, four, four feet down, so.
Does John, does John know, know that location?
Uh, I, I believe I've talked to just about everybody about that location, over time, and over the past.
All right, well, maybe we can try to do a two-for-one and get, get, uh, A Street and, and the sidewalk fixed, or fix if it's a culvert. The stormwater won't be so, yeah, okay.
Won't be so messy. But, uh, you know, it would help keep Annan Road from getting all the puddles on it, John from having to scrape that all the time. That's one of the reasons that it gets, okay, puddled up so bad.
Okay. See what we can do. Any other elected official comments? I have one.
Oh!
I just wanted to, I really wanted to thank, um, right, in particular, again, I know I mentioned it earlier, um, with regard to, um, the CARES Act relief grant. She really did a lot of work on this, and I really wanna thank her for, um, making this happen. I mean, it's a great benefit to our businesses, it's a great benefit to our residents, and, I mean, it really was all her. So thank you, Diane, and, and continue with the great work. She's, she's really come a long way since she started, not, not that you were, had somewhere to go, but, and you were going bad at the beginning, but, um, just really coming up to speed on all the state, um, software programs. Um, all, the city had a lot of grants that we had applied for and had gotten, but, um, and we expended that money from the city budget, but we had never gotten reimbursements for that money. And so, um, she's making sure that it's a priority, and we've gotten quite a bit of money coming in, um, from reimbursements on the grants. Um, and those, those state websites are, are a pair to navigate. Um, so they have their own training just to learn how to use the website.
Wow.
And so, um, so Diane, thank you very much, and, and keep up the great work, we really appreciate it. All right, um, hearing no other comments, uh, this meeting is adjourned at seven eighteen PM. Thank you, everybody.